Hey, good evening and welcome. This is the September 11th, 2024 meeting of the school committee, East Long Meadow School Committee. Call the meeting to order 5:02. The meeting is being both audio and video recording, recorded this evening. And I would ask that folks please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this being the 23rd anniversary of the tragedies of September 11th, if we could just have a moment of silence for those that we lost and those that their lives on the line to save others. Thank you. Okay, if we could do a roll call, please Samantha.
Secretary.
Pamela Blair Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Sarah Truglio.
Gordon Smith Superintendent of Schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Antonella Rochilla.
William Strother Senior.
Amy Delento.
Heather Brown Director of Curriculum.
Emmanuel Garcia Student Representatives.
And as our viewing audience has noticed, we have two new folks at the table today. We welcome William as our newest member of the school committee appointed last evening by a joint meeting of the school committee and town council. So welcome and thank you for jumping right in and being here the next day after being appointed. So looking forward to working with you. And then Manny, thank you for joining as our new student rep and look forward to your input and whatever you can contribute to be in here. So thank you for being here tonight. Okay. Do, 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 do. I have some minutes for approval. I will look for the August 19th executive, please.
Prove the August 19th, 2024 executive session meeting minutes.
One should made by Sarah. Second by Antonella. Any other discussion? Hearing not all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. And abstentions. William, abstain abstain for that?
Yes, yes.
Yes, so four, zero, one. And then the regular session.
Who approve the August 19th, 2024 session meeting minutes?
Made by Sarah. Second by Antonella. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And abstentions. One abstention, four, zero, one. Okay, thank you Samantha for the minutes. We have a committee and subcommittee communication. Sarah, would you like to start?
I have nothing at this time.
Antonella.
Nothing right now.
Yeah, William, would you like to toss in any information?
I have nothing right now.
Amy.
I do. I do need to share that the ELEAF, the run is coming up. I.
Spartan sprint.
Spartan sprint, sorry. Spartan sprint. It's beginning this year at the.
Depot.
Thank you. So much. The depot. And more information and registration can be found on eleaf.org.
Always a fun event.
Always.
Are you running?
Of course I'm not.
Thought you might reconsider.
No. Are you running?
Manny, do you have anything to add tonight? Okay, that's great. The one other thing I just wanted to mention was my fabulous book club that we just finished up. Walkable Cities.
It's doing.
With the town, deputy town manager.
Yes.
And about eight citizens from East Long Meadow. We read this book and had four or five meetings. Today we walked East Long Meadow and looked for opportunities for zoning and increased housing and we'll see what happens. So it's pretty cool. It was super fun.
How do you get into this?
Adding sidewalks. You gotta know people. No, we're doing another one. I'll let you know. But anyway, it's very cool and I was very appreciative to be part of that. Stay tuned for more information about that. Okay. We're moving on. Opportunity for visitors to address the committee seeing none tonight. We'll keep on trucking. We have the approval of an eighth grade waiver for field hockey.
So in your packets, you have a memo from Mr. McGee Athletic Director. Unfortunately, he could not be here tonight. So he has given me the information and it's a waiver for eighth grade field hockey players that has been supported by both Mr. Page, Principal of the high school and Mr. Pearson, Principal of the middle school. And basically, as you can see in the bullet points, that our eighth graders, just similar to other waivers in the past, if we sign up eighth graders, they would only play at the JV level. They're not going to displace any varsity players. And what this would allow us to do in the middle of August or August 22nd, so towards the a little bit later in August when Mr. McGee wrote this, we are anticipating 22 field hockey players. We actually have 23, so we're excited about that. However, to field a JV team, we feel we need more. And so right now we're just running a varsity team. So we don't have a JV schedule. We would like to put a JV schedule in place if we can attract enough eighth graders. Mr. McGee, Mr., excuse me. Mr. McGee feels that we may get seven or eight eighth graders who might be interested in doing this. And then they would help us field a JV team.
Thanks. All right. Can I just ask one question? I remember this occurred. I'm not sure if it was baseball or something and the question was about the students who were in eighth grade that were going to be participating on the JV team, usually were also involved. It might have been softball, Sarah, with their town.
Town.
How does that impact those individuals?
So they would have to participate in the high school event and or practice first if they're going to be a member of the team. However, if there is not a scheduled high school event, practice or competition, they could play a JV team. So as long as the the MIA rules are such that as long as it does not interfere with a scheduled high school event, then they are allowed to play for other teams.
And that doesn't impact, will that impact the current, like?
The eighth grade.
Town team or rec.
No.
Um, it can, yeah, because they may lose these players if there is a game that's scheduled and then there's a high school JV game. That they would have to play the high school game to stay on the team.
Do the eighth grader still need to pay the sport fee?
They do.
Yes. Right. How much is it this year?
Is, it's been $149 for the last 20 years.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Never increased it. Throughout the Commonwealth. It's a pretty good deal.
Oh, it is.
Any districts have a much higher athletic fee.
Shortest hurdle to participation. That's the key. Uh, any other questions on this? I would entertain a motion to approve.
To make a motion to approve the eighth grade MIA waiver for field hockey?
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any other discussions? Hearing not all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
One abstaining.
And one abstention, okay. Four, zero, one.
Okay. Mr. McGee, no, thank you very much.
Okay, moving along. We have Assistant Superintendent for Business reports. We have an update on ELPS bus transportation and new app for families. 2425.
Very exciting. I wanted to let you all know that we currently have 1,328 riders this year. Last year ended with 1,371 riders. So that's very good. We have 14 regular ed buses and I'm very excited to say that the late bus started this past Monday at Birchland Park and the high school. So I think that's received very nicely. You know, well attended. So LPVEC had a new software system and we had a little glitch. So unfortunately, out of those 1,328 riders, about 250 bus letters never went out to tell the parents like what the bus number was and the route and the whole thing. So as you can imagine, it caused total havoc for our families. So we're very, very sorry for that confusion. The good news is they have identified what went wrong so that it will not happen again. Which is very exciting. The other exciting thing that happened is because we weren't able to get that information to the parents through the mailing, we were able to upload into Power School. So all the families were able to see the information in Power School. So it all ended up working out okay. And again, we're very apologetic to our families. And we sure hope that this won't happen again. I wanted to lastly say that LPVEC has launched a new mobile app called My Drive K to 12. I gave you all in your packets here, information that was shared with the families. I think this has been received very, very well. Folks can go in and track the bus to see where it is. So if their child isn't home and they're getting all anxious, they can look it up to see, okay, all right, it's on its way and you know, kind of relieve that tension. So we're very, very excited about that. The last thing I wanted to say is that electric buses are coming. They're due to come at the end of October and two or three will be designated to ELPS.
Do you have the infrastructure in the bus yard?
Working on it right now. Yep, thanks. So that is very exciting. We just thought we should let everybody know what's happening with transportation.
Any questions on the update for transportation? Amy, did you take the bus to school?
Yeah, I did.
How's it going? Yeah, coming on time and.
Good answer. If it wasn't, I would, I would honestly want to know, so.
Cool. Okay. Thank you, Pam. Yes. Moving along, we have grants for approval, 2025 grants.
So the next one is in your package. You'll see a list of the 2425 grants. They're the typical grants. I'll go through them. You got the Title I, which is $279,631. Title IIA, $37,805. Title IV, $22,019. The Special Ed Early Childhood Grant, $19,760. The Special Ed IDEA Grant, which stands for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, $874,695. The MEKO Grant, which is $344,655. The Comprehensive School Health Services Grant from the DPH, $80,000. So the grand total for grants this year is $1,658,565.
All the study related to last year.
Say that again.
Similar to last year, all the grants.
Very similar, yes. So these are the new grants. These are not any of the rollovers on which I'll talk about with my first quarter. I mean, I'm sorry, with my fourth quarter with you.
That was a grant we were worried about, but it was not.
It was not cut as as much. It went down 23,000 and I forget the exact number that we were, remember?
Yes.
Were told that it would be much more than that. So we were able to do some things behind the scenes and and put it like a paraback under the Title I grant.
Please.
For next year.
It's currently, yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions on the grants? If there are no other questions, I would answer today in a motion to approve the grants.
I move to approve the grants for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Which was Sarah.
Okay.
Second by Antonella. Any other discussions? All in favor, they say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. You know, it's up to you. Okay, and one abstention. Four, zero, one. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And the fourth quarter report.
Okay, so in your packet, the fourth quarter report, I'd like to apologize. Up at the top, it says as of June 30, 2023. That's incorrect. It should be 2024. My apology on that. So as I always make mention to you, attached is a spreadsheet that's designed as a financial update for the school department operating budget after the fourth quarter dated June 30th, 2024. The report also includes grants and revolving accounts. If you go over to page five where the numbers are, that's the best place to just go right to. You'll see that the salaries are in the top section of the spreadsheet. Moved into to items that just makes it easier to understand. And as a reminder, 83% of our budget is on the salary side, which is $28,621,940 for last year. Of that, we're returning back to the general fund, $26,288 from the salary side. The bottom side, the bottom side of the spreadsheet here is 17% of your but I just lose my track of thought here, your expense side of the budget. Thank you. And that amount was $5,996,517 and we're returning back $28,037 on the expense side. So the grand total is just returning back $54,325 to the general fund, which is what happens to every department in the town at the end of the year. I want to remind everyone that that is less than a half a percent from our $34,618,457 budget last year.
Nice job, Pam.
Thank you.
And we ran a small but surplus in athletics. Isn't that usually run in the red?
Well, where are you at here? Athletics can fluctuate because that's, that's the salary side. So that's your coaches and so I might be asking somebody that's at a step four and then it changes. They're at step one or do you see? It's never quite exact.
Okay.
Any other questions on that portion?
Kim, I, I just have never, I guess, may know of a diff, what's difference between office supplies and educational supplies? Like how are those two line items differentiated?
So office, it would be like the, the things that we, the pens and pencils that we use in the office, whereas the educational side, it's, it's more of whatever the, the teachers need to run the classroom. Some of them may be similar, but they're coded differently.
Behind the scenes, okay.
Everything, I'm working on my end of year report now. This is September and everything is driven by location, by DOE codes. Okay, I love my DOE code. So behind the scenes, it's a different code and they, they want to know. I mean, it might be many of the same things, but they want to know. Using it as classroom.
Is office.
Yep. So, and again, I just want to remind you that every single requisition that comes through for any type of supply comes to my desk for my approval.
Okay.
Every Thursday, I sit with my accounts payable person and approve those recs. So we really are on top of that and I'm always looking at the DOE codes to make sure that we're, that we're, you know, processing things correctly. Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions there?
And we, we used all the permanent building sub money.
So I.
All the positions weren't filled, probably, or were they?
Well, so remember, I'm just going to remind you that we had, I think it was four, three or four at each building.
We have three.
We had originally. Originally at each building.
Two.
And three at Meadowbrook.
Okay, so it was funded from ESER.
Yeah.
This is the operating budget here and I broke it out so that we could start tracking it better. Because there was a lot of questions about that and for William's sake, the permanent building sub, what, what we did a couple of years ago, I guess, after coming back from COVID.
Coming into COVID.
Okay, we designated one person at each school that came in every single day and they, they could qualify for rather than being an on-call sub, they came in so the, the principal would have them to be able to use them because it was so challenging. There was, yeah, a lot of staff out and it was very challenging, as I'm sure you know.
So now we have one.
Now we have.
Building that comes every day, but we've moved money from the daily sub line item to this.
Permanent.
Item, which is permanent sub.
So again, we're, we're monitoring things to see how this goes. So we'll, we'll see what happens in FY25. Any other questions? If we can flip over to the next page. And again, I'm just going to remind everybody that this was at the end of the last fiscal year. So that's as of June 30th. This is where our grants ended. We have our federal grants at the, and at our state grants and then the private grant. We have just a small amount rolling over from that. So the rollover amount is $400,660 combined, but the bulk of that was that ESER three grant funds, which I'm just going to remind everybody, that's allocated for the playground at Meadowbrook, which is happening as we're speaking. So we'll have an update for you hopefully at the next school.
Oh, great.
So this money that's left over is for the.
No, you've already encumbered it.
I, well, I, I during the summer and I'm still in the process right now of finalizing that because it does all have to be encumbered by September 30th.
So you've partially encumbered and so Antonella's question.
Remember, this was 30th, so I didn't know who was going to do the installation at that time. So that happened after the June 30th date.
And now we'll wipe out the 345.
Yeah, we're use, I was like, we're using this, right? Okay. Absolutely, it's all right. And then ESER is gone.
Yes, and ESER is.
Actually gone.
So, and.
We should do some big press for that though. Once that playscape is done, get the reminder out there.
Yeah.
Let the community know it's there so they can use it.
Yep, absolutely.
Awesome.
No.
Great.
That ESER money was so nice.
It was. I mean, $2.2 million, you know, and we used it wisely, so.
I know.
So again, that's the, the rollover that will go into FY25 and be fully expended there. Okay? Down the bottom are your revolving accounts. So you know, these are a little different than grants. We, they roll over from year to year. So you're going to, and again, I'm going to apologize. If you look at the headers there, it says FY22, that should be 23. FY23, that should be 24. I'm very sorry. Obviously, I copied the template from the fourth quarter of last year and then updated all my, the numbers are correct. So you can feel confident with that. So the athletic revolving account, you can see we, you know, the carry forward, then the revenue last.
Ran in the red.
Say that again?
That ran in the red this year. That's what I was talking about.
That, yes, that's, that's the one that is, yes. Because typically we like to see that roll over 25, 30,000. What I can say is that at year end, we were able to help athletics, which we try to do every year anyways to kind of help with the expenses because we know what's going to happen. Transportation has been crazy and the other item that's for this upcoming year that we're in now is, is Kevin McGee needing to find sites to use since we don't have the high school. So it gets, it's going to be a little challenge, but those are conversations we'll have next month.
We're going to use that account to pay rental fees. Usually it's to take them in this account, right?
This.
You're saying we're going to use that account to pay other places to use their places?
Well, the athletic budget, yeah.
So are we going to have to through that account with additional funding?
We may.
We may.
At different points.
We haven't yet though in our projected budget. But we don't have specifics from Kevin yet.
Just starting to.
Plan. We have specifics for some of the spring sports, which we did discuss through the building committee. So we do know those numbers. What we don't have specifics on, or as we continue to go forward and we lose, say, this practice field, what's a next fall will look like.
Uh, the athletic stadium is the next line there. There was no revenue and we expended 5,150 there. So you got 4,000 rolling into.
That would have been a reimbursement to the DPW, the 5,000. Or may, may we have bought something?
Something for it, yes.
Something.
Yes, it's, it's a supply. And I can look it up if you want.
That's okay. No worries.
You, uh, the school rental accounts. You know, you can see we, and, and there's many accounts in, in here. Each school has a rental account. You know, revenue goes in there from the cap program, Willie Ross, the rec department agreement, which covers the custodial, you know, fees, the custodial costs for them to use it.
And receipts are in.
Outside rentals.
So you're right on the money.
Right, yeah, exactly. So you know, that collectively with all the accounts is rolling over $192,600. The next line there is your student mobile technology insurance account, which again has been it, it's been a, a good partnership. I, I think parents are happy with it. The first couple of years, it was really top heavy because we had, we had a lot of revenue coming in, right? But the machines were still new. But now you're going to see, if you look here, that just, you know, 19,000 came in in revenue, but we put out 46,000.
For new machine replacement?
Yeah.
We should get a number on that and we should talk about that within our capital discussion because normally we would rely on capital to make that and that's a substantial investment.
Yeah, it's broken machines to be fixed. It's not all brand new.
It's not all brand new.
No, it's, it's not all.
We do a lot of screen repairs. Um, and so right now as students come back from the summer break, they're doing a ton of repairs on screen replacement, keyboard replacement and that type of thing. It's over the summer.
If that's the case though, that 46,000 can't be sustainable if you're only taking it in 10 or 19.
Well, remember, that's just as of June. So then now it's a new school year. So you've got new revenue that you're going to see in the first quarter.
Thank you.
So we'll talk further about that. And just as a reminder, I think this was my third quarter. You had asked some questions about like what, what we were purchasing, et cetera. And at that time, Ryan had said that there was 30 Chromebooks and it's mostly screens, chargers and keyboards.
They bought 30 new ones?
I believe so.
Yeah, that sounds right with the.
Right, so it's not like, it's a lot of, I, I think there's a lot of broken things that was at Birchland Park, I think, is their heavy.
Person also, they all have cases as far as I can. But, but you're right.
Wrong on the.
They did it. You're right.
It's the first year moving.
Yeah.
And switching classes and transitioning over an entire campus as opposed to across the hall. So makes sense.
It does. The next line is the, the staff, teacher, para, mobile technology repairs. And you're going to see that's just kind of evens itself out. Unit A actually funds this. So as this becomes depleted, they give us a check. And we monitor that together, lots of communication. The school gift accounts. Each school has a gift account as well as the district and this line also include, includes ELEAF grants, which is ELEAF gift, which is wonderful. I'm just going to remind you this, and you don't see it here. That'll be in the first quarter again. I think it was like $54,000. Yeah, $54,388 was gifted to the, to the schools by ELEAF, which is really wonderful.
Did that jump a year? You did it in.
So it, it must have. We must have gotten revenue because they kind of changed the way they did it. I think.
Before June and after July.
Yeah, exactly. So yes, that's exactly what happened, Greg.
So you get a double next year potentially, depending on how they do it.
Depending on how.
I got you.
That could happen. So then once, once Gordon gets the list of the approved submissions, you know, that, that they're going to fund, I set up an individual account for each one at each school because remember Desi wants to know where, where the money's going and which school and how much and what's it being used for. So I use my, set it up with DOE codes and and then send it out an email. So right now they're in the process of ordering the items that for this next year.
So just to your benefit, William. East Long Meadow, the ELEAF stands for East Long Meadow Educational Endowment Fund. And so it's a group that's been in existence, I think for over 20 years. And they do an incredible job of fundraising and basically managing a fund. And then they ask for mini grants from teachers or paras or administrators. Anyone can put in for a mini grant and then they, they usually, the board and Amy sits as a representative for the school committee on their board. They designate a certain amount based on the fundraising that they've been doing that year. But I think their fund has gone now over, and I think this was in the last year or so, over a million dollars. So it's now generating much more interest than they had been used to. And so it's been really great to see because they've been able to increase the amount of grant money they're willing to give back to the schools. And it's pretty neat.
Thank you for explaining that, Gordon.
Sure.
Well, that was the gift accounts. The next line is the, it says tuition revolving. It's preschool tuition is really what's funding that right now. We brought in, the revenue was $75,000. I believe I was anticipating like $100,000.
Yeah.
That can change for a few reasons. Students might start out where they're supposed to pay that they, yeah, and then then it's, you know, discovered that perhaps they really need an IEP and need services. Now they qualify as free. So you know, those things happen. I, I do know Renee.
Preschool.
Renee, the principal over at Meadowbrook, I was talking to recently and I wouldn't be surprised if she comes back to this committee and perhaps wants to look at how it's, the programs being run again. Remember, we made.
Just changed it, yeah.
And it was kind of a work in progress and we always want to reevaluate and make sure we made the right decisions, right? So I'm just giving you a heads up that I foresee that that might happen the next few months. Once she gets, you know, school up and going and things are going smoothly. So that amount rolling over 60,000, don't I am on the wrong line? I, I am. The tuition, $309,101. I just want to remind you that we do fund some positions from that. I believe it's preschool teacher, point seven preschool coordinator, portion of that salary, 2.4 paras and a point three teacher.
That's the 50? That all fits in the 50?
Well, remember, I'm going to have revenue coming in this year.
But it does expense side though.
Right.
Things you just listed, that all fits in that 50.
Will be. Oh, I, I see what you're saying. I'm going to have to double check that, Greg. Because we added stuff for this FY25.
Stuff not been encumbered yet? Well, isn't everything encumbered?
This is fourth quarter.
This is last year.
Right.
Wasn't the preschool coordinator paid from ESER last year?
Yes. So, so things were paid other, so now we're utilizing this and I had a plan. I probably have a here. here during the budget discussions.
We did outline how we were gonna.
Are we gonna use it?
Transition from after to revolving account.
And I believe we also knew that after this year, it was going to be, starting to be depleted. So we were going to have to talk about that for FY twenty six budget because
it wasn't gonna be able to sustain itself over time.
Yes.
Well, the expenses must be more than the fifty typically in an annual basis. You must take more out of that because we were taking in seventy five. I know it's all changed, I know it's all changed recently with S R.
And just because we're bringing right in seventy five in revenue and only putting out fifty, our goal is to keep that going so that when things happen, like the year when all of a sudden in the month of, when was it, Gordon, like two weeks before school, we had like twenty new kindergarteners that came and they, they never registered. And we had to like open, I don't know if you remember that year, like when things happen or with special ed and.
Kindergarten revolving account.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, just, okay.
The next line, circuit breaker. So this is special education circuit breaker. Reimbursements that come back from the state to help us with our tremendous amount of special ed expenditures. What you will see is that the revenue there, which is one point two million, really is supposed to be one point seven million. The, the fourth quarter, four hundred and thirty thousand nine nine two didn't get posted until July eleventh. It came in in the next fiscal year, so that's why you're not seeing it here when I run reports.
Does that mean the current balance is one five? No, it can't be because that's more than our annual. What's the current balance then? So it rolled over to the following quarter, so it didn't matter.
Correct.
But it should have been here.
Yes, and then different decisions would have had to.
And that'd been more than in one year of circuit breaker, isn't that against the rules to roll that?
But I, but we didn't receive it. So what happened is the prior years probably.
So we, yeah, that worked to our advantage.
Yes, yes, it does. So tho- those are the kind of things where it gets really tricky at year end, Greg, that I'm always looking at because.
You're gonna have to spend more out of your commission for that. Yeah.
And the expenses are up there.
Yeah, we'll have reasons.
We had extraordinary relief at the end of the year. So there was a significant amount of money that came in at the end of the year. You had extraordinary relief coming in, I think, late May, early June. And then we had the final quarter of circuit breaker coming in in July.
Right.
Does extraordinary relief count to the amount you can roll over?
No, that actually has to be expended in the year that's given.
Okay, but we did ask for an extension on that.
And spending it?
Yeah, so we're spending it this year.
An extraordinary relief?
Yeah. We had asked, I think it's paying for the co-teaching.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm remembering that.
That might have been put in for pension so that we could spend it in the next fiscal year.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Are you concerned about that, though, Pam, in terms of next year? We use more circuit breaker than we took in this year?
You're saying we use more than we took in, but we're also going to get, we're projecting one point six three million coming in this year.
Okay.
So.
We won't use it all then?
Correct.
Okay.
We're hoping not to.
Well, we have, we.
So you have to spend what, what you roll over.
Right, so we can legally roll over one full year's worth of circuit breaker if we can. And most districts, William, try to do that, try to roll over as much as we can because there are many things that are out of our control. And, you know, a student could just move in and it, these add up very quickly. Out of district tuitions, transportation, special ed transportation behind the scenes. So I just wanted to make sure you knew what I was talking about. The next line is the transportation revolving account. I just want to remind you that when you see that revenue there of a hundred and forty two thousand dollars, the, a lot of that is from June payments that are made for this fiscal year, if that makes sense. As folks are, we request people to do it before school gets out and then we need them to register so we can do the, all this wonderful routing behind the scenes over the summer and get everybody those bus passes.
The revenue is still, still expected then?
Yes.
And all in?
Yep. That's correct. So that rolls over a hundred and thirty six thousand. And I always use a good hundred thousand dollars towards the transportation costs. So that's where that fund goes. The next one is school lunch. You will see that's a healthy budget there, healthy available budget, eight hundred fourteen thousand dollars. Over the summer, Lori did do a walk-in freezer project at Meadowbrook. I believe that was close to a hundred thousand dollars. It might be maybe eighty, ninety thousand. It's a decent amount of money. She's also, I don't, I don't think this has been completed yet, but it's in process. Maple shade esteem table, which is about thirty five thousand dollars. These are, they, you know, the, the ticket items are, are pretty expensive and so she's always on top of it. And as a reminder, you know, part of her audit with the state, because you do get federal and state reimbursements to fund school lunch, is that they're always inquiring about projects and where her budget is and, and, you know, what, what's in line. So she's reporting to them as well. The other thing I do want to talk to her about and we talked about how typically you need to have at least, I think it's like two months worth of operating in there. And I was using the figure of like two hundred and twenty thousand. I, I think that that operating expense is actually higher. So I'm just kind of gonna go over that with her because supplies, everything. I've been using that number for a number of years and it's probably not accurate. I'm thinking it's probably closer to, I don't know, two eighty, you know, and, and to use two months. So when you see this large balance, it is a large balance. But she does need to have, you know, a good five to six hundred thousand in there to cover. And, and that's a rule behind the scenes with the state also. So I just wanted to make mention of that to you. The last account is the school choice. We have a rollover balance in there of seven hundred eighty nine thousand eight hundred eighty two dollars. We worked on some projects over the summer that was funding the summer academy. Every school had a, a summer program, which I think those totaled, I was just looking at that today. I believe that was, I think I budgeted, I was projecting a hundred and eight thousand dollars collectively from what I got from the principals and Heather. And I think it came in about ninety four thousand. That's just for the regular ed summer program. Special ed summer program is a separate entity and has its own budget code in our operating budget. So that was really great. And some of those projects that are still ongoing, that the principals brought forward, that the school committee approved. I will say over the summer, the, what was it called? The P A intercom system, which was a safety issue over at Mountain View School, that was completed. And everyone's very happy because, again, it was a, a safety issue because when, obvious, when she's, you know, talking to the school, not everybody was hearing that. So they're very excited. I think that project was about twenty two thousand dollars.
That hasn't been encumbered yet.
No, that, that's done. But it's after, after the June thirtieth date, so it's not, it's not here. But we'll talk about that again in the first quarter. So, does anyone have any other questions? About any?
Do you know how far down school choice is gonna go once it's all, everything's settled?
I think there'll still be a very healthy balance in there as, as we talked about wanting to do so that we could continue to do these one projects that are so desperately needed for the district as well as the summer program, which I believe is a great success. So.
We'll see that on the first quarter, the updated balance, okay, great.
Thank you.
Questions on the, the quarter or the report? No more questions? Take a motion to accept the quarterly release.
Move to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty four fourth quarter report as presented?
Made by Sarah. By Amy, any other discussion? All of you say aye, aye, those opposed, nay. Well, she carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we have old business discuss, six point one, discussion revisions of policy recommendations from the ELPS Diversity and Equity Steering Committee.
Okay. You remember at our last meeting, we had looked at the policies coming that had been recommended for some revision or an app, a new policy in section A. So I'm bringing back some of the ones that we needed to add more revisions to. In the motion last time, we did have a few policies that were accepted. One of those, however, was not A C A B, sexual harassment and sexual misconduct. So I just wanted to bring that back. And that could have been due to the fact that we concentrated a large portion of our discussion on A C, A C A B dash R, which are the procedures. But I do not remember, but I wanted to bring back to all of you. If there were any questions, the new portion of sexual harassment and sexual misconduct is the sexual misconduct section policy. So that is, starts on page two and is in red. Just wanted to make sure there were no revisions there. I didn't have any notes on revisions.
Okay, so that's A C A B.
Correct. And, and we can, you know, take a motion after we do the procedures, if you want to do it on one of them, we are.
Yeah, we approved that, no?
No, this had questions and took it back to not only to look at the language that, where there was confusion. We wanted to make sure that we were reflecting actual practice because these actual procedures have been around for a long time. And we had not scrutinized them in a while. So we did take it back to the leadership team after the discussion that took place on August nineteenth. So moved to procedures.
The question on that, on A C A B, yeah, on our, you were talking about?
Yeah. Okay, so the areas that we were looking to revise, and we had quite a bit of discussion on, it was actually on the page. See Roman numeral nine and Roman numeral ten. And instruction of students. So discussing this with all of you and then bringing it back to the leadership team during one of our leadership team meetings, we revised that to reflect what is actually happening in our schools with regard to this policy and how we're going about communicating this policy. So we revised the top part a little bit upon adoption of the East Long Meadow Public Schools policy prohibiting sexual harassment. Students will receive age-appropriate information and instruction, which will include the following. And there, there had been bullets there. The bullets, though, had not been revised in quite a few years. So one, the first bullet point actually was not even included in the last procedures. And yet it is in our Code of Conduct, which gets distributed on the first day of school every year. So that should be included in there, that there's a definition of sexual harassment and a summary of the policy reporting procedures and possible consequences annually provided in the ELPS Code of Conduct and Student Handbook. That was a bullet that we needed to change.
So next year, will that Code of Conduct include this in policy?
Correct, yeah. What, what we'll do with all the policies as we finish off, we just have one more section that the Diversity and Equity on Steering Committee had looked at. What I'd like to do is similar to last year where we had revised a few policies after the progress monitoring, it used to be a Desi audit, but it's called progress monitoring now. Once you've approved everything, I'd like to message out to the entire district, or excuse me, the entire school community, the ELPS community and include the policies and where they've been revised. And then we can also put them up on our webpage, but makes it easier for them to find them. But then also, it's a great reminder, just as you said, Mr. Julio, to put into the Code of Conduct. Can we do it digitally? Yes, we can, so we'll make that happen. The unfortunate thing is we have to have printed copy in accordance with the law for our students day one. So, so we will certainly announce all of that. Then bullet two. At the secondary level, both at the middle school and at the high school level, they do still have class assemblies within the first few days of school. So, for instance, senior class probably had a class assembly and they addressed a number of things. Would that be right, Manny?
First day of school.
First day of school. Yes, Manny. Excited about that. Probably none of the students were excited about that. And so they do go over not only certain procedures, but they highlight certain sections of the Code of Conduct. Now we would become much more specific as part of that highlighting that they speak to sexual harassment. Then they also pick it up both at the middle and high school level in their health classes.
So for the first one around the explanation of the policy and its purpose, is that something then that we're collecting at the district level to say that we have, that it has occurred, like I?
We have not collected at the district level. So for instance, one of the things that they do is at the high school level, by law, they have to, in clubs and athletics, present the anti-hazing law and then make sure, so the coaches and the school collect that. And they keep it on file there, that, you know, so and so, Gordon Smith participated in this club. And this law was presented and explained, and then we sign off on it that, yes, I did receive a copy of it. Similar to receiving a copy of the Code of Conduct, that we do collect at the schools.
I'm just wondering if we should have evidence that it happened?
Sure.
Especially if we're talking, you're not talking about a club where maybe there's fifteen students participating or an athletic team or it's thirty, if you're talking about an entire class?
So the.
It might be.
It may be easier to at least collect agendas that it was covered. That's something actually we did at the middle school last year due to an inquiry about what do we cover?
Right.
And so we provided that.
For pieces such as the anti-hazing and for this piece around sexual misconduct and sexual harassment, do we have a standardized format that we say it should be done?
We haven't standardized the presentation, no, but we can.
I, I think it might prove us, like if we have, if we're putting forward a policy with recommendations for our procedures associated with it, that we have a standardized way that we are presenting it so that it's not left to chance.
Okay.
I don't know, that just, can I piggy?
Do you want that as part of the?
No, I, I, I mean, I just think if we're putting this for.
Leadership team put together, at the secondary level, we would work with them to say, hey, here's your approach.
Here's what you should be saying.
Yeah, okay.
I just make a follow up.
Absolutely.
Comment to that. I remember in the D E I steering committee, we spoke a lot about making this information, you know, the handbook's great. The, the, the presentation's hopefully gonna be really useful. But I think that maybe their focus was making sure that this is accessible, especially to the students and staff alike, especially the students, though, because they might not always have the resources or the maturity to know how to access the information that we're presenting. So they, I remember we spoke a little bit about, like, is there a way, like, there a Q R code, a place where they know they can go to get the information if they feel that they're being, that they're being targeted under one of these.
Which is a great, a, a, a great point, thank you. We could hold online similar to the bullying so that everybody, and that could be one of the things that we speak to. That, you know, if perchance you lose your Code of Conduct, happens. Then you know where to go to, and then there's a Q R code that we have in the Code of Conduct that can take you to not to sexual harassment policy, but to the anti-bias policy and reporting.
Right, where to how, to take them directly to the helping spot, to get them the help that they need.
I'm wondering, do we have a strong partnership with the district attorney's office through the youth advisory board? I wonder if there's any kind of standardized.
They may.
PowerPoints or student-created, more student-facing presentations that they've done. They've done wonderful things on driving while impaired. And they had the, one of the assistant district attorneys, I remember she did a presentation around use of your social media and, and phones and that, and that type of, of information. So maybe that's something, and we have representation, I think, still for me some of that on the youth advisory board.
We do every year.
Every year, so being able to maybe lean into that as a way of, of ensuring that this is happening in a more standardized fashion. And then the third bullet is that one, when we talk about instruction being provided in health classes, that's in alignment with the state framework, like.
Talking about in health classes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just making sure that.
That actually was.
In addition.
It wasn't a big change in terms of the new frameworks, that's something we both.
But just making sure that that's not, we're not providing instruction that's not in alignment with what the state has already decided should be.
No, no, we're aligned with that. And then the, that final bullet, there was a lot of discussion around this, both at the school committee level, but then also at the leadership level. And And then the that final bullet, there was a lot of discussion around this, both at the school committee level, but then also at the leadership level and. Most of the discussion in, say, when the counselors are doing second step or. They're starting to talk about. Say different aspects of the health curriculum. It's mostly around. Reporting. And problem solving with a trusted adult. And the leadership team felt pretty strongly that maybe that's where we put our focus. And only when needed, take that further should that problem solving. They didn't feel incredibly comfortable starting to break down, you know, sexual harassment and when. The the lessons that they're learning at that level are more around problem solving with a trusted resident.
They also referenced the health standards and there's nothing in there for elementary.
Elementary.
Believe it or not. I thought the new framework did have information in there for.
Not, it's not specifically sexual harassment.
Not specifically sexual harassment, but I do believe it talks about incest and it talks about. Rape and it talks about certain aspects like that, which would. Also lend themselves. Essentially this policy.
And so they're not saying that they. Will not take those discussions on. They're saying that they would like to do that as needed. Work first and foremost focusing on how do you problem solve with a trusted adult, whatever those problems may be.
Yeah. I just wonder about the language as needed, like. You think about like a. Youngest of students who aren't maybe necessarily. Where what is appropriate versus what is inappropriate? How do they then determine?
Well, they also talk about, so that's a good question, if it's needed.
If it's needed, how does.
They also talk about personal space. And they talk about how everyone has that space around them and for us, when we talk about respect. And understanding, being understanding of others, that we should not be invading personal space, which certainly would get into if someone is touching you. That's invading your personal space.
Did a quick search for some terms?
No, I understand.
It's challenging.
Very thin.
More age appropriate, I think, than necessarily as as needed.
Say it again. Sorry, Heather.
So I did a quick search and the the terms that you were just talking about are in the the middle school, but there is under sexual health five point six, so not three to five. Locate trusted adults, including parents and guardians for whom to get help if boundaries are being violated or if one is being physically, emotionally or sexually harassed or assaulted. So I that to the point of knowing something's going on wrong to talk to the trusted adult.
Into personal space. Probably at the fifth grade level, you start entering into. Those conversations.
So I mean, maybe then just saying at the elementary level, age appropriate discussions will take place and maybe. Striking as need. I don't know. That's just my thought because.
Yep.
Determining the need.
Yeah, that's pretty subjective, which it probably shouldn't be.
Right.
And at an elementary level, discussions will be age appropriate.
And we're confident that those discussions are going to happen. Through the health standards and through second steps.
I think our discussion, our continuing discussion with the counselors. Because with the new health standards, they're taking on more of this, and so we have to continue to have discussions to make sure that. There's an understanding and then there's a comfort level. There's also, I think, going to be a lot of theming, if you will, where something may lend itself to a PE lesson. But they may team, and I'll take it out of the realm of sexual harassment, stay with the school nurse around. Upper hygiene and nutrition and so forth. And. So that's something that we're talking with. Andy Goyette about with who's our administrative health services. We're hoping that there's going to be a a large collaboration amongst. Number of people throughout the district to. Keep us moving forward with the health standards.
So are you recommending a change to that bullet concern?
I I mean, I would at least say take out as needed and then.
How about elementary level discussions will be age appropriate?
Elementary level, age where we discussions will take place. What do people think?
Discussion that the elementary level will be age appropriate.
Sure.
Okay.
At the elementary level, discussions. Will be age appropriate. Is that what you said?
Discussions at elementary level. I I got it.
The word.
Discussions at the elementary level.
Will be age appropriate.
Will be. Okay, perfect.
Said. Mister English teacher, English teacher, yeah.
Yeah, that would work.
I like yours better. I just didn't hear it.
You're just saying that.
No, I'm I do.
You agree. Okay, so that was good for ACAB slash R.
That's it. Right. So if ultimately the motion is to. As a packet, we'll put that all eventually back into the manual.
Then you have ACB as well.
ACB, yes, was. A new policy that came out of our work with the diversity and equity. Yearing Committee and we discussed it last time, but we. Specifically talked about if you leave a few pages into where it talks about privacy, confidentiality and student records. And a lot of this, I'll preface what I'm about to say. A lot of this comes. Almost verbatim, excuse me, verbatim from DESI guidance, I guess. But it is confusing in terms of, and this is the bold at the bottom. In that we do know that a child who is fourteen years of age or older. Or who has. Has legal authority to consent to disclose information from their student record. They have authority to do some other things when you talk about AP teams and so forth. But students who are under fourteen and not yet in the ninth grade. You do have to defer all of that to the student's parent or guardian. And so. We had language in there that maybe was not as clear, and so we want to clarify it that students under fourteen, school staff will work with parents and. And the student to determine individual plans as needed. The next page. I italicize because this is coming directly from DESI guidance and I know it was causing confusion. And it and it causes confusion for administrators too. Because the DESI guidance, if you choose to include it. Then says, to the extent the school is not legally required to use a student's legal name and gender on other school records or documents. So this means you're not changing the official record. You're not lobbying DESI to through their SACID. To make a name change, which then would trigger name changes on things like MCAS rosters and so forth. However. The guidance is that if the student. Chooses to go with a name that's not the chosen name, that we do our best to. Uphold that.
A non official.
Right, non official name. And that that is challenging. And that is where we would need to, for children under age of fourteen, discuss that with parents. But that does often present conflict. So that's why I kept that in italics to see what this group. Wants to do and whether to keep that in there or to. Remove it or reword it. Because it's it's not regulation, it's guidance. I double check that on the website. There is regulation on there. And so we do need to, and it caused a lot of confusion as we were. Discussing it as a leadership team because. We're all, we all tend to be as administrators, rule followers. Because we have to enforce the rules. And so. We see DESI come out with new guidance, we're like, oh, that's what we should be doing. And then we start moving forward with it, but it does, just as everybody pointed out, as we. Put this recommended policy in front of everyone. It becomes confusing. Because the law is fourteen years or older. And this group. Wanted to make sure that it was clear that we are working as a district with families. That makes sense. We try to partner with families whenever we can. I do, although you not only have that confusion, but sometimes you do have conflict. Which then administrators are into those discussions, which can be challenging discussions.
Be supportive of keeping the DESI language. Our guidelines here. You know, it's. All this policy and procedure and all of this is, it's so critical, but I also think that this takes the. A human lens to it, you know, we're remembering that these are children. Families that we're supporting and there's a lot of gray area in this, and so I think this is. I think this is an appropriate way. Show our support, but also recognize that there's. You know, we're we're following, we're certainly within the law, but we're also saying we're supporting families and this is how we're going above and beyond to make sure we're supporting everybody.
Okay. Okay, so that's ACB. Actually, you want me to? Keep that in there as we just.
Right.
I support that, but I.
Recommend that? I would recommend it. I think if we can follow it's DESI's guidance, it's helpful because. That's a big role that DESI holds is providing this guidance. Okay, so I'll take the italics out. We have to, as administrators, we become increasingly more comfortable with uncomfortable situations. Working on.
Is that your newest book club?
That's my newest book. I'm writing.
Day in the gray.
We do book hubs. Okay, so we have, is that it for ACB?
That is. Say with one more. At the bottom, under restrooms, you would add, I I wouldn't necessarily keep the bold in, but that was so that we could find it. We did talk about designating at least one single use bathroom in every building. The high school and the middle school already have that, but the elementary schools had not, and we did discuss that. If you're planning individually with a family and you want to offer the nurses bathroom, that's up to the family, but you have to have a bathroom that is designated that could be separate. From the nurse's office. And so they do know that. They would need to make sure that there's a designated bathroom. Now, with that said, we did talk about the fact that. We're not at the elementary level going to be announcing to our students that, hey. There's now a designated bathroom that is available for all students that they can then lock. That we didn't see that necessarily as appropriate, but should a family come seek us out, definitely saw that as appropriate. I think we would have a lot of takers if they all suddenly.
Right.
They could lock the bathroom.
But that'll be open to the staff as well, that bathroom, so that it's not wasted. I know we're limited in terms of restroom.
I think we would have to because in at least one of our elementary buildings, there is no male. Designated staff bathroom. But for whatever reason, there is a female designated staff bathroom, and so that got discussion too.
Okay. Any other questions on ACB? So we would look for approval of the three. We have an amendment on ACAB slash R and we have. Going to include the DESI guidelines for ACB. I got a motion to that effect. You can take them one at a time or hit them all three at once. Your choice.
Make a motion.
There you go.
All right.
Approve the first ACAB.
Yep.
Approve ACDB, the sexual harassment and sexual misconduct.
Okay, motion. You want to do them all? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Oh, yep, that's great.
Additionally, making a motion to amend. ACAB dash R.
That's discussed.
Disgusted. And. Final motion to approve the ACB non discrimination on a basis. Gender, non binary and gender expansive students.
Including the DESI guidelines?
Including the DESI guidelines.
Perfect. Motion made by Amy, seconded by William. You get that?
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Okay, good work. Thank you.
Okay, these are. To a first read, so these are policies coming out of section G. That, again, our diversity and equity steering committee worked on last year. And so the first one is GBAA. And this is a new policy. And what it's capturing here is actually some things that we already have in place, but it's now actually putting it into a policy. And. What I mean by that is that we use the top. Statement, Islam public schools of the district that values postings for the last three years. So when we post a job, we've had this statement. On the job posting. And then as you continue to go through, we've talked about. Islam public school district is committed to cultivating an environment. That's been part of posting and part of our hiring. Work that's gone on over the last three years as well, when we put together. Hiring tools and ways to train committees that will be helping with hiring. In terms of eliminating, to the extent possible, unconscious bias. These are some of the things that have come into place within those tools. And so this is a way to capture all of that in a new policy.
Mr. Smith, would you say that the heart of the policy is where it says Islam public schools take proactive measures too?
Yes.
Questions on GBAA, diversity of the workplace. Okay. GBAC.
Okay, now this is also a new policy. And if you remember. I want to say at least five years ago. It was definitely pre COVID. The protected groups had been. Increased and. Pregnancy and pregnancy related conditions were added to. Many of our policies around making sure that we are welcoming and supportive. Discriminating. And so we had updated policies at that time with that. That wording. This, however, takes it even further and make sure that we're really. Supporting anyone who may be dealing with. Pregnancy related conditions or be pregnant and making sure that we're a very supportive. Community and have these things in place.
This is. Our, and I'm asking this because it's been a while, our. Original policy around disabilities, but with the pregnancy and pregnancy relation conditions, or is this. Taking the place of accommodating employees with disabilities?
This is actually a new policy in and of itself. We still have a policy that is accommodating employees with disabilities. Actually specific to pregnancy and pregnancy related conditions. You were talking about the ADA compliance.
Any questions on GBAC accommodation, accommodating employees with this, his pregnancy and pregnancy conditions?
Okay.
So those who we have for. Later, are we going to second?
Now that's up to you.
Bring him back just to stay in.
Bring him back?
Have it, yeah.
Okay, takes it off the leadership team agenda tomorrow.
Oh, you want to do that?
No, no.
We can do it. I don't mind.
I'm bringing this one.
You want to do it? I don't mind. Let's just do it. Take a motion.
I was just kidding.
No, I'm fine. No, it's really, it'll save us time. It'll save us time next time. William, typically we do a first reading and a second reading just to have. Public opportunity to visit us and give us input, but sometimes we waive it. So you have some reason to use it.
Everybody.
We're doing this?
Do it.
Okay.
Keep going busy tomorrow.
Okay, I make a motion to. Accept the recommendations, section G, is that what I'm doing?
Yes. If we could approve the policy.
Okay, to.
Or to.
Section G of the policy manual from the ELPS Diversity and Equity Steering Committee Policies GBAA. Diversity in the Workplace. And additionally, make. Prove. And additionally, make them approve GBAC, accommodating employees with disabilities, pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions.
Okay, motion made by Amy, seconded by Antonella. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Okay, thank you for those. Next, we have the approval of a donation from Axana Salon and Spa at Meadowbrook Elementary, Elementary's Autism Program.
You have the information on this one?
Do you want me to just take it up? Renee had reached out, Principal Lodi, back in the spring. Axana was doing, wanted to do a, like a fundraiser, and they wanted to, at first, it was to donate to gift funds for the school. But then they kind of more thought about how they wanted to go about this, and so they asked for a list of items that the autistic program over there would be interested. So they they purchased these items already and have donated them to the school. So they're sitting on Renee's stage until the school committee officially approves this gift, because as you know, everything is always very transparent. And so for $1,471.39 worth of items, which was, we're very thankful to Axana Salon for the very generous donation, and Ms. Lodi was hoping the school committee would just approve that gift.
I move to accept the donation from Axana Salon and Spa to Meadowbrook Elementary Autism Programs for $1,471.39.
Motion made by Antonella, seconded by Sarah. Any discussion? I would simply say it's always advantageous for local business with our school, so
No, that's so
Thank you to Axana Salon and Spa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero.
Renee, no.
Thank you.
The final item on our agenda is Director of Student Support Services position. We're going to table that until our next meeting, and we'll have an update hopefully by then. Okay. Okay, if there is no further ado, Jamie, thank you tonight, our new Director of LCAT.
Nice job, Jamie. Congratulations.
Manny, thank you for being here tonight, and we'll look forward to seeing you at future meetings. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Sarah. Seconded by Antonella. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We are adjourned.